Good evening, parents, and welcome to the Advocates for Angels Town Hall meeting that I have every Wednesday night. I'm Valerie Aprahamean with Advocates for Angels, and I'm the IEP navigator, and I help parents get the IEP, their child needs to thrive both in school and in life after high school. So I'm going to continue to go over all of the guidelines coming down from Congress, federal guidelines that all states need to adhere to in terms of virtual and remote schooling. For you parents that are back in school, then it's back to the same old, same old in terms of our IEP. But most parents that are following me and are having real problems right now are the parents that are continuing to experience school closures and have virtual or remote schooling, or a hybrid model where they go to school part-time and then they're in a virtual or remote learning model for the rest of the week. So the newest thing that has occurred is that they, the guidelines from Secretary DeVos has been that she is requiring daily live academic instruction. So that means, parents, that your teachers are required to get online and teach your child daily live academic teaching and lessons, just as if they were in a live classroom in a brick-and-mortar building. So that doesn't mean that they do a video and they just send you videos for your child to watch, or that they send you lessons through an email or through some kind of Google Docs or platform, or that they, you know, give you links to go to for activities to do. That's not what live academic instruction means. Live academic instruction is your teacher gets online, she sees the whole class, they might have breakout sessions and go into small groups where there's aides, other aides helping, or, or the teacher rotates from little group to group, just as if they were in school. So it's live instruction. So for kindergarten, it is three hours a day of live academic instruction that they are required to provide. For grades one to three, it's three hours and 50 minutes of live academic instruction. And for grades four to 12, it is four hours of live academic instruction. So, parents, if your teachers are not providing you those hours, those minutes of live academic instruction, then you need to contact your local school district and let them know that they are violating the guidelines that set by Congress that are required for a virtual or remote learning model. Okay, so we all know our, every child, except for really super high-functioning kids on an IEP, all other kids regressed in March, April, May, and June because our children did not receive live academic instruction. And parents became the teachers during those last spring, or what was that? Yeah, spring, yeah. And, and it was the teacher that became, the parents that became the teacher, the education fell on parents to teach their child without the skills or knowledge to be a teacher. Because parents were not teachers, we're not educators, we're not speech and language providers, we're not occupational therapists, we're not behavioralists, yet we did not receive, our child's IEP was not implemented, and we didn't receive the services. So now that's a good, just segue into what can you do about that? Okay, so there's a lot of controversy around this, where I'm still getting parents telling me, my district is saying, no, they're not going to make up anything. They, they just say, they just send out a PWN or some kind of statement saying, we are not required to make up for last March, April, May, and June because the school's closed. That is not true, because the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act remained in place. It was still valid, and it says that when a child's IEP is not implemented, that's services, that's academic instruction minutes, that is accommodations, goals and objectives. When those things aren't implemented, the law says that the school district owes that child, whatever regression took place, because that child did not receive their IEP, the district must make up for that regression. So there has to be some kind of a recovery plan to make up for the regression that your child incurred because the district did not implement your child's IEP. That's the law. So there's a little caveat here, and what the districts are using as an excuse is there is in IDA, a clause that says, when a national emergency occurs, that, the, the regulation is, if a school district closes their schools, if they provide services and education to the general education population, then they must provide it to the special education population. If the district does not provide any education or academic instruction to the general education population, then they don't have to provide anything to the special education population. Well, we all know that they provided distance learning plans. Everybody provided distance learning plans to the gen ed population and to the special ed population. That means IEPs had to be implemented. So the only way they could have gotten out of it is if your school district did zippity-doo-dah, nothing for general ed, there was no, no kind of implementation or communication or anything from the school district to general ed, then they wouldn't have to do it to implement your IEP for special ed. That did not occur. Everybody got distance learning plans. Therefore, they're held accountable to implement the IEP. So that should cover that question that I'm getting a lot of from parents. And that's the excuse that districts are, are using to say, we don't have to make up for the comp ed, or we don't have to recover those services, or that, the skills that your child lost because they didn't receive any of their IEP. Okay? So make a note if you have questions about that, because I can answer questions when I'm done. So that's compensatory education. Next thing, parents, if your school district is requiring you to have an IEP meeting, and typically what, what most school districts are doing is, they are required and obligated, and it is their duty to, because of March, April, May, and June, test your child to determine what their present levels are perform, of performance are now, to determine what was the regression that took place from March, April, May, and June. So they need to test them now to find out where are they now in comparison to where they were in March, then their present levels, and that gap there in their regression is what they're gonna owe you. Okay? In terms of the regression for, and the recovery, they need to owe you to make up for those lost skills. So most school districts are calling an IEP meeting to, to review current, present levels of performance and document it in the IEP, because that's really the guidelines that came down as well. The, the guideline is, every school district must retest its child to determine accurate present levels of performance. Now, when they do that, and they have your IEP, and they document your current present levels of performance, don't let them change your services and say, well, we're, we're still in school closure, so we have to decrease your speech, or we can't give you the OT because we're in a virtual model, or we can't do APE, or we can't do, we can't do whatever, whatever, whatever. Your child still has the same needs. Your child's services should not decrease or change. In fact, they probably have more needs now because they've regressed. So just be cognizant not to let them decrease your services when you have an IEP meeting to document the current present levels of performance after they retest your child. Okay? And that should be the time when you ask for your compensatory services at that IEP. Make sure it's documented, make sure it's identified in your parent agenda, and then they're going to say, no, because that's what they're all saying. They're all saying, denying comp ed. And, and, you know, I'm not going to go into why, but you can imagine why. Because how could they ever make up for all that lost education for the entire school district of every kid on an IEP? So they're denying. So the only parents that are gonna see anything are the parents that know advocacy steps, the steps I've been teaching you how to get comp ed. Okay? And those steps are writing your parent agenda, making sure that in your parent agenda, you say, I am requesting compensatory education and services to make up for the skills my child lost during the time of March, April, May, and June, when my IEP was not implemented. Then, after they have their little discussion about the present levels of performance, and they're probably going to move in the way of saying, oh, your child didn't regress that much. Oh, we don't have to have a recovery plan, because look, your child barely regressed. They did great. They, and it was summer, too. There was still, you know, two months in there of summer, so we don't need to make anything up. We're good. You just say, no, you do, you need to make up for the services and the education lost during March, April, May, and June. You just stick to your request. And then they're going to provide you, they must provide you with a PWN, a prior written notice, which is their legal response to your request for comp ed. And they, and when they're going to say that they're denying your request for comp ed in the PWN, and once you have that documented denial from the school district, at that time is when you can file a compliance complaint with your state board of education to, for, to have the state determine if the district is out of compliance with failing to provide your IEP. And they will, because IDA was in place. Now, how much that's gonna be, that's up to your state and what they decide the resolution is going to look like. But your district will be found out of compliance and in violation for doing that. But the parents that are successful with taking those steps, those advocacy steps, are the only parents that are going to see anything, because they're not gonna do it unless you take advanced advocacy steps to hold them accountable. Just asking is not going to get them to say yes, or getting angry, or complaining on social media, or doing any of the other things that we do because we're upset. It's these legal steps that you have to take, and then you're gonna see some resolution and be successful in getting something that made up from before. Now, in terms of moving ahead for this school year, because we have this big problem in front of us for this school year, and, and many districts are still not providing what they need to provide in the IEP now for virtual schooling, moving forward. So what you're gonna wanna do is, in your IEP meeting, you're going to wanna ask questions of your school district. Okay? What are my, what are my services gonna look like? When are they going to happen? How is my one-on-one aide going to work with my child in a virtual model? My child isn't able to sit in front of a computer and learn from the teacher on a computer. They don't understand that yet. All of these questions and problems parents are having. I have to work, I don't have someone to, to sit next to my child and prompt them and help them with learning over the computer. I have to hire a tutor to come in and help my child. My child has tantrums. Their behaviors are impeding their ability to access the teacher's lesson online. Whatever it may be, that's what's gonna be in your parent agenda. That's what you're going to be bringing to the school district, and the school district is responsible to resolve those issues for you, to write new goals, to figure out how they're going to assist your child to learn in a virtual model. It's not your problem, parents, it's the district's problem to figure out, not yours. It's theirs, because they are obligated, and it's their duty, to make sure that your child makes progress towards their goals in the IEP, and that your child receives educational benefit. And educational benefit means they're making progress towards their goals, and they should be accessing one year of educational progress, just like every other child learns one year of school curriculum as they move from grade to grade, one year. Therefore, our child on an IEP should also be progressing one school year of education. In fact, our, we would expect more from our children than one school year, because our kids are behind academically, most of them are behind academically. So if your child's behind academically, and they're not moving forward and progressing at least a year in their education every year, they're gonna, that gap is just gonna continue to get wider, and they're never going to make it to grade level, which is always our goal, to get our child to grade level standards. Okay? So that is your IEP meeting. You're gonna wanna ask for your schedule, you're gonna wanna ask for a schedule to, to, so that you have, and you're prepared for, okay, in the morning from nine to nine-thirty is gonna be math. From nine-thirty to ten is gonna be writing. From ten to ten-thirty is gonna be speech and language. From ten-thirty to eleven is gonna be occupational therapy. And you have your schedule right there in front of you. You know what to expect, and your child knows what to expect. You can also ask for a visual schedule that they make up for your child, so your child can see the picture of, oh, there's my speech and language teacher. I have speech and language now, and the word speech and language next to it. So your child can become more independent, have their schedule next to them, and work towards accessing their education online on the computer. So you're gonna ask for the schedule for you with the link in that schedule, so that you don't have to go searching all over the place. Where's that link again for that Zoom link for speech and language? Oh, where's the link for my child's science class and high school? Because every teacher's gonna have a different link, right? So you're gonna wanna have all the links in one place on one schedule, so that it's very easy to move through the school day. And whether your child is young or in junior high or, or in high school, your students should also have the schedule to promote independence. So that is your IEP meeting. Parents, you're gonna want to continue to document, 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 which I've been saying all along, even in the summer, even last March, April, May, and June, I kept telling parents, please document every day what is happening. And you're gonna wanna continue to do that, because your documenting what's happening in the home is going to show your evidence and your paper trail when you, if you, when you encounter problems. So if your child isn't accessing, isn't learning, isn't able to sit, isn't able to do the work, has behaviors, whatever the problem is, you're gonna have a daily log that's gonna, that's gonna show the pattern and show what happened every day in terms of how your child is being successful or unsuccessful in accessing an education online. You're never gonna remember it all, so you, so you, and you'll have no evidence to show the district when you have an IEP meeting, if you do run into problems, for them to address and fix those problems. So you need to have, you know, all your ducks in a row, all your information right there, so you can show them, this is what's been happening, school district, and these are the problems I need you to fix, because my child is not learning, they're not growing, I'm not getting my services. So every day, you're gonna write down, I didn't get my speech today, and I was supposed to get speech. Or, you know, today my child sat for 10 minutes, and then they ran away, and they had a tantrum, and I couldn't get him back to the class. So they only got 10 minutes of instruction that day, and they got no speech. Whatever happened that day. You're gonna write it down, you're gonna have a log and your evidence, so that you can move forward in addressing those problems as we move forward. Because everybody's having problems, we're all kind of like, you know, trying to, you know, get settled. Teachers and parents and communication, and the kids have a transition to understanding, this is the way school is now, and everybody's just, you know, all over the place right now. So it's gonna take some time for kids to get used to this, parents to figure out how they're gonna do this, and teachers also to get used to this new kind of a way of teaching and fitting in with their family schedules, and their kids also online, and all of the stuff that's going on with everybody right now in this insane situation that we're all in today, guys. And if you don't have your device, then I'm just gonna shake my finger at you guys, because you should have your device by now, unless you haven't started school yet. I think most school districts have opened, yeah, so far, but if you haven't, okay, but you should be, you should have your device ready to go for the first day of school. Now, I have heard lots of school districts are on back order. Devices are on back order, or they ran out of devices, and they're, they ordered new ones, whatever. You know, there, there's big problems all over the nation with kids still not having devices. So again, I'm, I'm putting it back on you, parents, that it's your responsibility. It's always the, the parent that learns how to advocate, learns how to write emails, learns how to document, learns how to make requests properly. This is all the way that you hold them accountable and you advocate. And those are the parents that are gonna get the devices. The parents that are writing legal letters to your program specialist, to the district office. And if, and if your program specialist can't help you, then you go over their head, and you write it to the director of special ed and say, hey, I still have my device, and my child has missed two weeks of school. So now you not only owe me March, April, May, and June, but now you owe me two more weeks of the, of education, because you, you guys failed to get me a device for my child. And then guess what? Magically, you're gonna get a device in a couple days. So parents who, who learn how to do these things, those are the parents that are gonna get served. The parents that sit back and do nothing and say, well, I didn't get my device. And, and I don't, and, you know, and be angry about it, they, they don't care. They're, those parents aren't gonna get their device, and they're gonna be the last ones to get it. You know, eventually, they're gonna get it, maybe not even at all. So you have to speak up in these situations, and you have to make sure you document, email, and communicate, and take these advocacy steps that I've been talking about through all this time. And then, of course, when they say no, the, the highest and most advanced advocacy step is writing a compliance complaint to the state board of education, which you will need assistance on. Because if you don't know how to write a compliance complaint, then you're probably not going to be successful. Once it gets to your state, you're not gonna have written it right, and then you're, they're just, they're, you're gonna lose. You're not gonna, they're not gonna find your district in violation of anything, because you didn't write it properly. So you have to write it right, which is citing the law that they violated, putting it in a certain format. That, well, that's one of the things I provide on my parent brigade, my monthly parent brigade, is I have the forms and the, the, the whole outline how to write a compliance complaint. And I teach parents how to do it, and I actually assist them to write their compliance complaint, along with all the other emails, your parent agenda, writing a response letter to an IEP, all of those things, the scripts and the formats for all of those advocacy steps to document your child's case and what you're requesting. So those are the latest tips and the most important ones that we find ourselves in, in advocacy and addressing the problems that we're facing today, parents. So, does anybody have a question or need any clarification on any of that? Or dealing with any of those things right now that you'd like to discuss? Or you'd like me to clarify for you?
Valerie, I still haven't gotten my device for Theo.
I thought you got it.
No, have not gotten it. And, and they continue to say, you know, it's on order, but I have not gotten a device.
Oh, wow. I, I didn't know that, because I would've let them know that today, boy.
I know, I know, I know. Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I forgot to even tell you.
So I thought, didn't we write your letter and you, you... Was that your communication device that you got?
I got the communication device. I did not get the device for Chromebook for online, for being on with the teacher all day. I have the communication device, I have the academic device, but I don't have the device to be on with the teacher, the all-day device.
Okay.
Chromebook that he was supposed to get.
Okay.
Which is making it really difficult, Valerie, because I'm trying to struggle using my computer, my daughter's computer, Ted's computer, and we're just struggling every day to get him on, trying to figure out which, what are we gonna use? Sometimes I use the phone, because I'm trying to figure it out, and it's, it's really horrific.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And it's just not, that's not appropriate, parents. You should not have to use your own device, or your husband's device, or your teenager, you know, high school or college. The, every child should have their own device to learn in the virtual model. So, yeah. So we're gonna be contacting the district right away, Liz, and let them know, because that is not okay. That is not okay, that, that any child has a device and school has started.
Yes.
So we'll be writing a letter and letting them know right away. That they need to get you your device. Okay. Who else has a question? I know you guys must have some questions on what's happening. Isn't everybody back in school now? Because I, I know that we have some people from out of state. I don't know if you guys have started that are out of state.
New York is not back yet.
Oh, you're not back yet, Abby?
No, no.
When do you guys go back?
They're saying the eighth.
The eighth?
Yeah.
Okay. So you guys are a little later than we are.
Yeah.
And you guys are staying closed, right? Or, I, I've heard different things about New York. Are they opening or not?
It's, it's half and half, and, or you can opt out and do all virtual.
Okay. So what, what are you gonna do?
All virtual.
Okay, okay. So do you have a device?
Yeah, he has one, yeah.
From the school district?
Yes, yes, he has a Chromebook.
Good for you, Abby. Good. You're ready to go, then. And so, did you call an IEP meeting?
Yeah. I sent a long letter explaining, because I have not heard back from any of the schools that they send packets to, so I sent a long letter saying that, you know, school is two weeks away, and, you know, it's, we need to make a decision, he needs to be placed, that, you know, it's not acceptable that he goes back there, where he was. And so he, the, you know, the head of special ed said, all right, let's set up a meeting Monday, so that we can, you know, he, he said he can't okay Fusion, that, because it's a private school, so that it has to go before an impartial hearing. And so he said, you know, we'll have the IEP meeting, so that we can establish that that's the route we're taking, and then he's gonna set up the impartial hearing. And I have a phone, a phone call with him tomorrow also, just to kinda go over some things. You know, I brought up the fact, like, if you'll pay for the state-approved private schools, you know, why, why don't they pay for a, a regular private school? And he was saying, you know, it comes down to money and other things. Yeah. So I spoke, I spoke to one lawyer, and they said, you know, just mention that you're willing to kick in something, you know, towards the schooling, because they probably won't pay for the whole thing at Fusion. So that's what my conversation tomorrow will be with him about.
Okay, good. So, but you weren't able to even view the ones they were offering yet?
Right, right. Which was my point, saying I only have like two weeks left to vet five schools, which is impossible. So he's, you know, so far going along with, you know, me wanting to proceed with Fusion. Like I said, he said that he can't, he can't okay that, you know, we have to be impartial.
As an administrator, you would want you, he would want you to be okay with the ones they are paying for and offering. So why doesn't he give you that information?
He, he claims that he sent out all the packets the same time. I heard from one school that told me I needed to fill out some more information, which I did. I emailed that school back to make sure that they got my information. They never responded. He said that he has been calling them and emailing them, and they are not responding to him. So, you know, it sounds like these schools are so overwhelmed that they really don't want anybody else, you know, to deal with. So, which I guess works in my favor to some degree.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say. So, yeah, you, because I'm sure your attorney's gonna say, well, that's a good thing, because if they can't meet your needs, which would be those school sites, then they, they have to pay for the private, because they can't meet your needs in, at the public school or these other non-public schools, so they have to pay for a private school.
Right, but in the meantime, you know, they're saying, well, if nothing comes through, then the IEP remains as it was. You know, and I said that it can't be, because he can't go back there.
Yeah.
You know, so that's, that's where we are. So I think, I think I'm making some progress, we'll see this week.
Yeah. So are you, um, going to be hiring that attorney to help you with the due process?
Yeah, he said that, um, sounded very nice. He said, um, you know, first tell him, you know, have the IEP meeting. He said, you don't need me for that. And then he says if it goes to the due process, he said he'll, he'll be on board.
Okay. So I just want to make sure, Abby, that you, you've checked this guy out. And he does special education law and that's all he does.
Yes, yes. My advocate, uh, has been working with him, she said, for about 20 years.
Good.
And he, and, and he loves Fusion and he's done a lot of placements at Fusion, so.
Okay, good. That makes me feel good, good.
Yes.
Because I don't want you to get an advocate, attorney that's going to take advantage of you.
Yeah, no, no. And he was very, very, very reasonable and didn't, you know, I had one attorney that wasn't the attorney. They, you know, gave me somebody else to speak to. And she said, well, it's $500 for consultation. I said, well, what are your fees? So she says, well, we'll discuss that at the consultation. I said, I'm not paying $500 to find out that your fees are exorbitant and I can't afford you.
Oh, no.
You know, so that, they're all, all kinds, all kinds.
Yes, there are. Yes, there are. And that wasn't a good one.
No.
Because typically consultations are free for attorneys.
Oh, okay, okay.
They should be.
Okay.
Because, yeah, a lot of them charge $500 an hour.
Yeah.
That's pretty typical. But they shouldn't be charging you for a consultation.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I wasn't going for that one.
Good, good. Okay, well, that's good.
Thank you.
That's good news. Were you going to say something, Violet? I saw you unmuted.
I don't know if I have good connection.
Okay. I can hear you.
Well, I'm breaking off. I can just, I'll play.
Did you have a question?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, okay, if you can just maybe speak up a little bit. I can hear you.
Okay, so, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So my question is, um, and my son has an IEP with a special day class where he was going to another school for, um, reading and spelling for 120 minutes a day, five days a week, but they've cut down to 45 minutes a day. And I'm requesting that they go back to what the IEP says. But I don't know if I have to be more straightforward than that, if there is anything that I can reference.
Okay. All right. So when you say he had a higher amount and now they're only giving him 45, did they change that and, in the IEP, or is that just what they're saying they're giving you now?
No, they just changed it as of COVID or due to COVID.
What if they changed it? Does that mean they changed, they wrote it like that in the IEP?
No.
No.
No, they never changed it on the IEP.
Okay, good, good, good. That's good. Okay, so, uh, what you need to do is, you need to write them an email and you need to say, what grade is your child in?
He's in sixth grade.
Sixth grade, okay. So he should be receiving, um, four hours a day of live virtual instruction.
Okay.
So that's what you need to do. You need to write them.
He also has his...
Go ahead.
Sorry, he, he does have his, he does have his general ed classes.
Okay.
Aside from that, um, he, he, so, so between eight and 2:00 AM before COVID, he would go from 12 to two to another school for his special day class to teach him how to read and write. Now that we're virtually, they've cut that down to just 45 minutes.
Okay. Well, whatever it adds up to, whatever you, the whole, your, all of your schedule, when you put all those minutes together, it has to be four hours. At least.
So, so if it does need four hours, my concern is that his special day class is not enough to teach him how to read and write to close the gap that he's at, because he's at a first grade level for reading and writing.
I see. Okay. So then what you need to do is, um, what, those are called SAI, specialized academic instruction minutes for the special education part of it. Whatever it says in the IEP are, are that amount of time, they have to give you that amount of time. They can't say, oh, we're cutting it down to 45 minutes if he had two hours before. They still have to give you two hours now.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. And I just wanted to double check before my IEP meeting next week.
Yes. So at your IEP meeting, you're going to write a parent agenda. You're in the brigade now, right?
Yeah, you sent me the agenda. I've completed it. I, I've already worked it out and I made sure to request that, um, they go back to the 120 minutes.
Okay, good. Perfect, perfect. Yep, good. You say you're right on track. So, yeah. So then, and you make sure when you go to the IEP that they address that issue in your agenda and that they, you, you make sure that they write it down in the notes, that there was a discussion. Mom requested this. Mom had a question about this. We had a discussion and this was the decision. And their decision has to be either yes, they're going to do it, or no, they say they're not going to do it. And they have to write that in your IEP. Okay?
Okay, so if they say no, do I request a PWN or?
Yes, yes. So if they say no, then you're going to say, I'm requesting a prior written notice. PWN, prior written notice. And then, yeah, as soon as you get that, which should be within 15 to 30 days, then you can write your compliance complaint.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Who else, guys? Is everybody's, um, child, um, learning online and accessing okay and getting used to virtual school? Because I know that's a big change for all of our kids. Everybody else good right now? Okay, guys. Everybody's good. We'll just have it short and sweet tonight. Um, for the brigade members that are online right now, we have our next brigade call on, uh, August 29th, Saturday at 12 o'clock, noon Pacific time. So I'll see you guys then and, uh...
Wait, Valerie, Rhod is saying to wait, that she's trying, I think she's trying to ask you something.
Oh, okay. Yeah, Rhodora? You're unmuted, Rhodora, but we can't hear you.
She says her mic is not working.
Oh, okay, she's talking in the chat.
Yeah.
Okay.
You could ask her to tell it in the chat and we could tell you what she's, uh, what she's saying.
Okay, um... Why don't you type in the chat, Rhodora? Type your question in the chat and then I'm going to answer Kate's question. Would I need to get present levels for my student even though he transitioned out? Oh, yeah. Okay, so, yes, yes, yes. Because present levels, Kate, are present levels of performance in terms of the, uh, goals, the goals and objectives. So every goal and objective is based off of a present level of performance and then the goal is written to make one year's progress. Okay? So even though it might not be academic goals, there are all the other goals that, that he's going to have in his IEP. You're going to still have goals in the IEP, even though it's the adult transition program. They're just going to be different kinds of goals. So yes, you're going to get, uh, present levels of performance, uh, in those areas that the goals are written.
Okay. Thanks, Phoebe.
You're welcome. Okay, so Rhodora said, um, I'm trying to email the school to request an IEP, but there's no email address listed for the staff on the school website. So you're going to call your district office and you're going to ask your district office who your program specialist is, and you're going to ask them for your program specialist's email. And then you're also going to ask them for your case carrier at the school site's email. If, unless you don't know, if you know it. So your case carrier is always the, uh, the special ed teacher. So you're, that, there's always a case carrier at the school site level who oversees your case and it's one of the special ed teachers at the school site. And then there's a program specialist at the district level, who is the district representative. You always want to email those two people whenever you write an email. And then you, and then you might, uh, CC other people too, who are, you know, related to whatever you're discussing. But th- those people you always want to email, because you always want to have your district representative know what's going on at the school site level. And then at the school site level, it's your case carrier and maybe even your principal at the school site level or the assistant principal, one of the administrators at the school site level. So you just, you call and you get the emails. Uh, you call the district office and you get the, and you ask for those emails. And typically they are on the website. You should be able to find them on the website. But sometimes I know it's hard to find, so they don't make it easy, that's for sure. Okay. Okay, guys. If there's not any more questions, then you guys have a good night and, um, check out my Monday morning Facebook lives, you guys, so you can, um, help me, uh, get, help more parents and, and gain more, um, traction on that Facebook live. Monday mornings at 10 o'clock.
Can you, is there something you can send out, like a reminder? Because I, I signed up for it, but I don't seem to be getting any reminders for anything. I used to get it for, I used to get it for when, you know, for this, for tonight. But that I seem to remember by myself. I don't get the reminder anymore and I don't get it for the, um, the Facebook Live.
Oh, I send out email reminders. You're not getting them, Abby?
No, no, no.
But you did use to get them?
I used to get them for the Wednesday, yes.
Yeah, I don't.
And I got one or two for this, for the, for the Monday, I think. But now I don't seem to get them.
Yeah, I get the Monday. I don't get the Wednesday.
So on Monday morning, I think Kim sends it out. And, and at the bottom, so at the top it'll say, um, don't forget the Mon- uh, Monday morning Facebook live. But then if you keep reading down, it'll say, and Wednesday night is the town hall meeting. It's on the same email. Because I don't want to bombard you guys. Maybe I'll just have her start saying.
No, bombard us. It's okay. I'm bombarding us.
Okay. I'm going to tell her then. I'm going to tell her just, yeah, but they're both on the same, there's...
Okay, but I'm not getting the Monday one. That, that I'm definitely not getting.
All right. I don't know why, Abby. I'll, I'll check into that.
Okay.
Okay, and then I'll, I'll add one for Wednesday for town hall then too.
Rhodora says send reminder.
That's so weird. All you guys are on my email list.
I, I had trouble once before also. In the beginning, I wasn't getting the emails and then, and then all of a sudden I got like, you know, a whole bunch of them, you know, came at once. So I'm not sure with, you know, what's going on.
All right. Um, but you, you're getting the, the, um, brigade emails, right?
Um...
Because the brigade emails are different. Everybody that's, that goes on my website and signs up or, or registers for a town hall, they'll get my reminder for the town hall and the Facebook. But then people who are in the brigade, you guys get a whole other set of emails from me about reminders for the brigade calls and in-between stuff.
I get all that. I get that very consistently. All right.
I don't, I don't think I do. But, you know, I, I, I get every time that you, um, add something to the Facebook page, I get something from Facebook saying, you know, you added something. But I'm not, I don't think I'm really getting many of these other emails.
The brigade ones? Okay, so Abby, check your, uh, spam?
That I have, I have, I have.
Okay, I, I will look into that for you.
You know, although I, I do, I have to say, I'm having, I do have trouble sometimes because stuff goes into red mail that I never read.
Okay.
So I don't know if it's, I'll have to check that also. So just to make sure it's not on my end.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll check and then I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, guys. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
All right, good night.
Bye, Valerie.